Couple updates and then I'm going to turn it over to Zulma, who's going to talk about the new Great Plates Program. As of right now, Morgan Hill has 48 cases of COVID, according to the county dashboard. We spoke with the county this morning about DePaul and the status of how things are going there. They are continuing to do testing at the DePaul site. In addition to that, the Board of Supervisors approved the dollars to continue the construction or the reconstruction of the hospital space over there that's going to be used. In the short term, they're looking at using that space that was a hospital for enhancing urgent care, along with other ancillary services such as labs and pharmacy, and eventually looking at subacute care, as they call it. No, you know, it won't be a full-scale hospital, but they have a lot of room in there to expand services to our community, potentially allow for COVID patients if needed. It is going to take longer than they originally thought. Originally, it was about a six-week timeline, but at this point, they're thinking July to have finished construction, but it is proceeding forward. So before I turn it over to Zulma, so normally, how we've done this, if you're an attendee, if you have questions, you can go ahead and raise your hand, or there's the Q and A function, and there's also the chat function. And the other quick announcement that I wanted to make, and I'll make it again at the end of this presentation, is that tomorrow, we have a council and community workshop on our budget, and so that starts at nine o'clock, and it is intended to run until probably about three o'clock tomorrow. And we're going to be updating from where we were when we introduced the budget on April 22nd, diving in deep in the different budget areas. But most importantly is we're going to be going through all of the recommended budget reductions in response to the revenue losses that we anticipate because of COVID. And so at the time that we presented the recommended budget, we were at a $12 million loss in revenues that really spans the rest of this fiscal year and the next two fiscal years. And since then, we're now looking at most likely $17 million in revenue loss. And so we have compiled proposed budget reductions, and so we'll talk about those, and we'll talk about the assumptions. And the assumptions are what we're referring to as Phase One, you know, which is assuming the shelter in place will be in place until the end of this month. And then we would gradually come out of it with, you know, some restrictions, and the economy would start restoring. That's Phase One, and then we'll talk about the possibility of Phase Two, which means the shelter in place is extended, the restrictions are severe, there's a second wave that is significant that leads to additional revenue loss. So I just encourage this group that's here to tune in tomorrow, starting at nine o'clock. So with that, I want to introduce Zulma Maciel, and she works for the City of San Jose. She is Assistant to the City Manager, and she has been in, she's working, I believe, currently at the Emergency Operations Center. And one of the programs that she's working on very directly is called the Great Plates Program. And it's a program that benefits seniors and restaurants. And so I'm not going to take away her thunder, so I would love for Zulma to turn it over to you, and you can explain what the program is, how our community that knows about seniors can get the word out, what we can share with our restaurants, how best to get the word out, and take it away.
Thank you so much, and thank you, City Manager Turner, for inviting me to participate in the town hall with the residents of Morgan Hill. Like was said, my name is Zulma Maciel. I'm with the City Manager's Office in the City of San Jose, but in my current capacity, I'm supporting the Emergency Operations Center virtually on a number of fronts, but one of them is around food distribution, food and necessities distribution. And why that is, is the City of San Jose was selected by the County of Santa Clara to be the lead countywide. And while the City of San Jose normally serves residents of San Jose, in this particular position related to responding to the COVID pandemic, we have been given a larger responsibility for countywide in ensuring that the people who need, particularly the most vulnerable people in our community, get the meals that they need, you know, at the place that they're at. So just a little bit of background, over 400, sorry about the background noise. I think somebody just arrived at our door. Hold on just a minute. Sorry about that. So there are over 400 distribution sites countywide in terms of food that people can pick up. But what I'm here to talk about specifically today is an initiative that was launched about two weeks ago, just a little over two weeks. Governor Gavin Newsom announced the Lunch of the Great Plates Delivered Program, which is designed to support adults 65 and older and adults 60 to 64, who are at high risk from COVID-19, who are staying home. And the initiative is really to have local restaurants identified that could deliver through nutritious meals a day. So part of it is not only ensuring that the most vulnerable in our community get ready to heat meals, but there are also, this is part of an economic recovery strategy, to engage local restaurants who otherwise would not have a whole lot of, you know, people coming through. So what we've learned over the last two weeks is that there's a very narrow focus from this, and it took a little while for the California Emergency Operations Center to get the details for us. But what I can say is that we know in San Jose, or at least, pardon me, Santa Clara countywide, there will be a demand of approximately 30,000 meals per week. With that said, this is based on the criteria that the state has identified for the people who would be getting, who would be qualified to get the meals. And so let me go be a little more specific about what that means. So the criteria that the state has identified for this is very specific, and like I said earlier, it must be 65 or older, or otherwise at high risk. High risk includes those who are COVID positive or COVID exposed, as documented by a public health official. They must have an underlying condition, must live alone or with one other program-eligible adult. So if there are two adults in the home who are both at high risk or COVID-exposed, COVID-positive, then they both would be eligible. Must not be currently receiving assistance from other federal nutrition assistance programs, and receive no more than $74,940 in household income one per year. So as you can see, it's pretty specific. I think the challenge here is it's trying to find the seniors that qualify. So the most important message I think I can convey tonight is that if you think you know someone or have neighbors who you think might fall into this category, please have them call, or you can call on their behalf and get them connected to Sourcewise, and we could provide the information to Morgan Hill so that it's posted on the website. But I'll give you the number now, so you can jot it down. It's 408-350-3200. Again, that's Sourcewise, which is a local agency that the City of San Jose is contracting with to essentially do intake and enrollment. And the number again is, for Sourcewise, is 408-350-3200. As soon as you dial that number, make sure you press Option 1, and you'll be directly communicated to a community service worker who will then do the, begin the process for intake. One other thing, there's two other things I wanted to mention regarding this program is that while this is an economic recovery initiative, right, to reengage and activate restaurants, what we've learned recently is that it's very likely it will only be about 10 restaurants countywide. And what those restaurants are at this moment, I know that there are five that were activated this week for an Alpha Test on Monday and a Beta Test yesterday, essentially testing this activation, testing the delivery of the meals, and so forth. The full launch will be, will begin on Monday, Monday, May 18th. And at that time, there will be very public messaging about the program, how to apply, and also for restaurants who are interested in activating the restaurant as part of the program. There are ways through World Central Kitchens, there's a site online in which restaurants that are interested can apply. There are a number of restaurants that have already applied that were not activated this week because of the Beta, the Beta Tests were only five. But that doesn't mean they won't be selected in the future. They could be future candidates if they meet some other eligible criteria that's been identified by the state, which is to provide nutritious meals that are in a variety of different cuisines and that are scalable, right? So finally, the one thing I would do want to say is, again, the timeline. The public launch will be Monday, the 18th. It's expected that on Monday, we'll have, we'll be serving about 1,800 participants. This week, it was less than 100, or maybe just a little over 100. I'll have to get the numbers. But it's expected that 1,800 participants will begin on Monday, and then we'll begin to scale rather quickly to reach the numbers that we'll need. And also, I will let you know that in the Beta Test, there were four participants in Morgan Hill who were served their meals yesterday.
Great. Thank you, Zulma. I have a couple follow-up questions, and then I'll see if any of our attendees have questions as well. So first, thank you for introducing this program. We have had some interest, both from seniors as well as from restaurateurs. And so from the restaurateur's perspective, you mentioned 10 restaurants. So what does that 10 really mean? Over the course of the program, or it's a rotating 10? You mentioned you could be putting out as many as 30,000 meals. So how many restaurants, you know, is there a capacity for?
That's an excellent question, and I wish I had a definitive answer on that. All I know is that it's 10 through June 10th.
Okay.
I think that the other, this was a very limited scope, very limited time, and the state has told us that this is a program that will continue through June 10th. We'd like that there to be an extension, and I think a lot of that depends on state funding and if any of the CARES Act funds can be accessed for this program. And of course, there's a new package that will be going into the Senate, and the HEROES Act, and hopefully, there'll be additional federal funds that will go directly, you know, locally so that we can expand the program for a longer period of time.
So on the topic of funding, we are, our size of city is lower, we're less than 50,000. So that's the first mark for CDBG funding, so we don't meet that. We don't meet the $500,000 mark, and so we haven't received a direct allocation of funding. However, we are trying to lobby and advocate for cities of our size. Now, we have heard that we can participate, our residents can participate without our city having to fund because of the CARES funding that you're using. Just wanted to confirm that that's true, that there's, the City of Morgan Hill does not have to contribute to the program for our residents to enjoy the program. Is that accurate?
Well, yes and no. So the cities that, who will not be opting into the program, that doesn't mean that the participants will not be getting the meals that they need. We want to make sure that everybody who needs a meal is going to get it. But we also understand that there's, pardon me, limited funding at the smaller city level, all of ours, really. So the City of San Jose is going to front the bill. And in cases where, for example, there is a very large volume, perhaps there'd be later a negotiation on how we could distribute those costs. I believe 6% of the cost is what's required for local cities. And how we divide that 6% is still up in the air, but the bottom line is, we want to make sure that the seniors who need the meals get them.
Right. And I've also heard from seniors that have called Sourcewise and haven't yet received a phone call back. So my guess is Sourcewise is being inundated with requests for this program. So what would you, what should we pass on to our seniors as far as waiting to hear back to start the process of signing up to see if they qualify?
Yeah, so if they've already have left their phone number or at least some initial information, they should feel pretty confident that they're going to get a call back. And I'm glad that they've already started doing that. I think this is the week to do it. Once this becomes very public on Monday, I think they're going to get a surge of calls, which I would imagine they've already prepared the staffing for that, for the official launch. But I would be, you know, the part of the agreement that the city has with Sourcewise is to ensure that the program is responsive. So, you know, if we begin to hear that, it's not, we would love to hear about it from the cities directly, from the liaisons. We want to make sure that this is working for the people who need it the most.
Okay. And so for us, our city liaison, I believe, is Kristi Thomas, and she's on this call. So Kristi, would you like to say hi to the group and let them know who you are and that they can contact you?
Hello, everyone. I'm Kristi Thomas, City of Morgan Hill Housing Program Coordinator, and you can reach out. I've been working with Zulma over the last couple of weeks, learning about this program and watching as it changes. It's ever-changing, so we're kind of just going with the flow. But yes, if anyone needs to get ahold of me, you can either email me or telephone me, and I'll put my email and telephone in the chat.
Great. Thank you, Kristi. And so now, I'd like to open it up to the attendees. If you have a question or a comment related to this program, please raise your hand or put it in the Q and A or chat feature.
For those participants calling in, if you'd like to raise your hand, you can do so by dialing *9.
All right, our first question that has come in, it says, can homeless families get this service?
So regardless of where you're at, if you meet the criteria, as I had delineated just earlier, and we know where you're at, where a homeless person is at to get the meals. But here's the thing, there is, if there is a, the eligibility says 75,000, you know, is making about $75,000 a year's earning. And that doesn't mean that somebody can't be homeless around here, and we know that. The people who are homeless are working and still making money and can't afford a place to live or haven't found something. But as long as you meet that criteria, you're eligible to participate.
Great. Thank you.
Regardless of status, regardless of homes, as long as you're in the county of Santa Clara.
Great. Any other questions for Zulma? All right, I don't see anything else. If any questions come up, Zulma, I'll send them your way. Thank you so much for joining us tonight, and we will be in touch soon.
Absolutely. My pleasure. Good evening, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you, Zulma.
All right, so now what we want to go ahead and do is just open it up for any sort of general questions that the group has, and I see another one that says, do you have a website? And yes, we can post some information in the Q and A. Kristi, maybe you can help out with that, or Michelle, with information that has been publicly shared. And there is a, they also have an executive brief on the program that we can share as well. Okay, so scanning the attendees. Please let us know if you have any questions or if there are any areas that you would like us to cover as far as city services during this time.
And the attendees, you can also, if you'd like to raise your hand and speak, if you click the Participants button, you should then see a Raise Your Hand icon, and then we can call on you that way as well.
All right, Michelle, I see a couple, one hand up right now. All right, somebody with a phone name of Galaxy S10, you can go ahead and ask your question.
I'm wondering if you're a senior but don't have the internet, how will you find out about this on Monday?
So my recommendation to you is to call the phone number that we have listed, and we can go ahead and read that off again. And I would think that you can just address Sourcewise by, just by phone and not through the internet. And so the number is 408-350-3200.
And I did put it in the chat as well, so folks are able to scroll up to that for the folks that are joined in.
Great. And then it's Option 1. Okay, question from Steve. How is the city working with a county on what services will be opened up and when that would happen? Yes, very, very good question. And so just to start, bigger picture. So the state has a shelter-in-place order in effect, and the county has a shelter-in-place order in effect. And there can be differences between the two. And we are required, and the county's required, to follow whichever one is stricter. And so we, as a city underneath Santa Clara County, have to follow the orders of Santa Clara County. We can put in place orders that are more restrictive than the county, but not less restrictive. We're in constant contact with the county on all sorts of topics, and they provide us updates and so forth. And so, you know, as of right now, from the order, they've relaxed some of the restrictions as of May 4th, having to do with the construction industry, having to do with outdoor activities, as well as some childcare. And so as far as additional services being opened up, you know, they haven't, they haven't announced the when or the how. But what we are starting to see is, you know, as the governor is rolling out different changes, certain counties have lessened some of the restrictions. And so, you know, we've asked some of the questions such as, you know, when, when do we, when can we anticipate that, you know, that to happen in Santa Clara County? And as of right now, there's no spec, there's no specific date that the county has in mind to say, allow for non-essential curbside business, as some counties have had. And so one of the things that we're focusing on is figuring out how we can help as a city in getting our business community ready so that when we do get the green light, our businesses are as ready as possible. The Chamber of Commerce last Wednesday, as a matter of fact, hosted a Zoom meeting to talk about this and to get input and solicit input from business owners and residents about, you know, what are the things that you need help with? What can the city help with? Are there restrictions in place that, you know, that we should look at so that our businesses are ready? And let me see if I covered that question. Yeah, so no real indication of the when. We've just heard from Dr. Sarah Cody, our county public health official, that Santa Clara County numbers are looking good, but not good enough to the point where we're meeting each of the indicators where they would feel comfortable with relaxing some of the restrictions that are in place. There's a lot more to be done. While our numbers look good, they also talk about some of our counties that are biased, where the numbers aren't as good. And of course, COVID-19 doesn't know jurisdictional boundaries and with how COVID can be passed from one person to the next. You know, we have to look at what, you know, what's happening with other counties around us. Okay, I see another question that says, why are restaurants being allowed to open up, but clothing stores cannot? So when the order originally came out, the county became very specific on what essential business, what are essential businesses? And why would you need to leave your home? You know, what are the reasons to leave your home? And so you leave your home only for essential business or essential activities. And so included in that was the line of work for essential workers. So, you know, everything from public safety to mail carriers, to utility workers, and the list goes on. And then in addition to that, we have basic needs, and one of those basic needs is food. And so then, of course, grocery stores are allowed. And then, you know, restaurants have been able to open up for takeout as long as they can have the right protocols in place as far as cleaning and social distancing. And now, one of the new requirements is for businesses, so restaurants and other businesses, to ensure, they're required to ensure that their employees, as well as their customers, wear facial masks or facial coverings. And so restaurants have been allowed now. So the question, specific question is, you know, why aren't clothing stores open? And, you know, you know, these are some of our small businesses. And, you know, and so I think that it just goes back to the definition of, you know, essential business or essential activities. And as of right now, you know, clothing, unfortunately, you know, doesn't fall under that. Let's see, Todd added to that. But now Morgan Hill has now giving the go-ahead to dine inside the restaurant. So as of right now, the only thing that restaurants are allowed to do is offer to-go meals, so takeout meals, or restaurants can also deliver the food, but no dine-in is allowed at this point in Santa Clara County. Anything else that my team wants to add to that?
Just that the main reason restaurants are considered essential, while some others aren't, is that there are many people in our community that can't cook for themselves. And that's one of the reasons for that, for the presentation that Zulma gave, is that there are seniors and others that have a hard time cooking for themselves. So restaurants really do fulfill an essential role for them. But you're right, it's, we're not, there's some talk about some rural counties in the state being allowed to have limited dine-in, but that does not apply in Santa Clara County. In Santa Clara County, there is no dine-in restaurant service.
Chief Palstrove added to the chat a web link. And so that's the web link for asking questions, sharing a concern. And the website for the county has really long and extensive, but helpful frequently-asked questions. And so really good resource. And then Zulma just also added a frequently-asked questions related to Great Plates, so you can take a look at that as well. Patrice has a question, and so go ahead. Actually, Michelle, yes, okay. So it looks like you're unmuted, Patrice.
Thanks, Christina. So my question is regarding the private medical and dental practices. Who determines whether they are considered essential or not? Is it the county, the city, state? And when are they expected to open up?
So it's definitely not at the city level. And so the county, you know, has the order out determining, you know, what are essential businesses? And I believe it's covered in the frequently-asked questions. And so maybe one of my teammates can look this up because I know there's a frequently-asked question on it because I've seen it, and it basically says, can I, you know, go to my routine dentist appointment? Or it might be written such that, you know, I'm a dentist, can I provide service? And I believe the answer is not for regular appointments, but rather just for urgent or emergency sort of appointments. As far as timing, that hasn't been rolled out yet for Santa Clara County. I do know that other parts of the state, you know, they're starting to open up more sort of surgeries that are sort of more elective or that, you know, weren't time-sensitive. That has not yet happened in Santa Clara County. Anything else on that, teammates? Okay, we have a question from Liam.
Hi, Liam. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Hey, how are you?
Good.
Thanks for hosting these sessions. They're great. Just a general question. So when, you know, you were talking about, will we, will things get lifted in June? Will it be longer? I'm a little bit more on the pessimistic side, unfortunately. I work for a company who just told us all to stay at home for another five months, right? So, you know, and I know I'm not, I'm not alone, right? Is there any point where, as a city or as a county or as a state, we can start to release more emergency funds? You know, wouldn't you get to a point where you say, as a city, I'm in dire straits now, I'm going to die in the vine here if I don't hit some emergency button, right? Are there options like that at some stage? Or are we a long ways away from that yet, or is it not there at all?
Yeah, and I assume the funds you're asking about are funds to go from the state or the federal government to us as a city?
Sure, but even as a city in reserves, right? I mean, do you have to dig into reserves at some point? Or like in an emergency situation? What's the definition of an emergency, you know?
Got it. Okay, so I have a couple different comments on that. So first, from funding from the state and federal government, I made some comments earlier about because of our population size, we don't qualify for some of the CARES Act funding that you've heard about. Now, with that, we have, you know, sent letters and tried to lobby, you know, for the smaller cities so that we can receive a direct allocation of funding. In addition to that, there have been some, just as a matter of fact, this week, some additional potential funding for cities. And so we continue to read up on that and see what we can do and to try to, try to get what funding we can. But we're not, you know, holding our breath, you know, that we're going to get that funding. Now, as far as emergency goes, so we, as a city, have proclaimed a local emergency, as has every city in the county. And so what that does is it sets us up such that we can eventually apply for funds from the federal government for the costs that we from the federal government for that cost that we incur as a result of the emergency. You know, things like, you know, any sort of equipment and that sort of thing. Sort of the same sort of thing if we had an earthquake or another, you know, just a natural disaster. Now, as far as our own city reserves, and we'll talk about this more at tomorrow's budget workshop, we do have a general fund reserve that, you know, some call it a rainy day fund. And what it's expected, what it's assumed to do is to be there in the event that, you know, you have an emergency so that, you know, there's money in the bank, you know, to take care of emergencies. Now, this is a big one, right? I mean, we anticipate a revenue loss of 17 million over the next couple of months plus two years. And so we can't just rely on that reserve. We would run out of money as a city. But we can, to some extent, use some of the reserve. And we're this year going to use part of that reserve as we're going to be spending more than we're bringing in. Unfortunately, as a city, we can't, you know, just go out, we just can't increase taxes and increase certain fees, you know, without, without going to the voters to do that. So we have a limited revenue base. So I, I think that addresses your question, but let me know if you have any follow-up questions.
No, I think that was a good summary.
Okay.
You know, I, I, what I feel and I watch and I observe is that there's a lot of potential help out there, but you've really got to go fight for it, right? And I'm not saying you're not, right? But we're really, as you indicated, we're a really small fish in an awfully big ocean, right?
Yep.
And anything we can do to invest in our team, our people, our expertise to say, let's go fight for what's out there that we could be entitled to, right? Anything we can do there, right? Because I think it's going to get, I feel like it's going to get a little more dire, right?
Yeah, no, that, that's a really good point. And one of the things I didn't mention that, that we have is the League of California Cities. And so most of the cities in California are part of it. And so they help lobby on behalf of cities. And so they're a bigger organization that is helped fighting with us for cities our size. So we're, we're not alone in that, in that sense.
And similarly, there's the National League of Cities and they're fighting nationwide for cities, smaller cities. And they've done great work to get our federal legislature to, to pay attention to issues that, that are affecting smaller cities. And we'll see if they pan out because it's a long way to go from the act that's currently pending in the House to getting it approved by the Senate and signed by the president. But, but right now it's looking like there's a possibility we'll get some help from the federal government. And I'd also say that a majority of our state legislature is on board with using some of the money that the state has gotten to pass through to smaller cities. But there's still a long way to go before that becomes reality. Because the, the truth is our state can't bring money either in their entire straits right now. So, but there is some movement and some, in some, some good movement in terms of getting more resources for cities. It's really going to be a question of how restricted those funds are if we do get them as well.
Okay, our next question that came in from the chat is, why is Santa Clara County's order more restrictive than what the state says we need? So that's a question that I think we've, we've heard a lot about, heard a lot of, you know, is, is why? Why in Santa Clara County, you know, why can't we do some of the things that we're seeing other counties in, in California? And for that matter, other states are starting to do. And, you know, I, first off, we in Santa Clara County had, I think, the first couple of cases here in Santa Clara County, Silicon Valley, you know, we have, we had a lot of business people traveling, you know, to and from our country. And we have a high population and there's just a significant number of cases here in, in Santa Clara County. And to date, Santa Clara County, as well as six other counties, have sort of really been hand in hand and putting out their orders. And San Mateo County, I believe, is the first to sort of back away and to lessen some of the restrictions before some of the other counties are ready to do that. And so, you know, they, Dr. Sarah Cody and Dr. Smith, the CEO of the county, you know, talk about really taking a scientific and conservative approach that, you know, they don't want to lessen the restrictions until all of the right indicators are in place, you know? And what are some of those indicators? You know, they have to do with the number of cases, the number of deaths, you know, the contacts. And, you know, if somebody gets COVID, how many people are they passing it on to? They want that number to be less than one. So because of those things, you know, Santa Clara County isn't ready to lessen the restrictions. Anything else from my team, Dawn, chief, others?
I would just say that the, the push is to make the restrictions more local than statewide. Huge difference between counties within the state, heavily populated counties like ours and the rest of the Bay Area and some down in Southern California versus counties like Butte and Mono Counties where much less dense, very sparsely populated and the risks are much lower. So statewide solution wouldn't, wouldn't be the best. I, you know, Santa Clara County can speak to why they're more restrictive than the other Bay Area counties, but statewide solution probably doesn't make a lot of sense.
So we had a question. It's any idea when CRC is going to open, our Centennial Recreation Center? And how do we open it? Chris typed in a response, so I'm just going to go ahead and share it with this group. For the CRC and other recreation facilities, we're monitoring both the state and the county orders. We are also reviewing what recreation facilities, gyms and others around the country are doing for reopening. We are preparing to take the necessary precautions to open safely as soon as we are approved to do so by the county and state. Unfortunately, we don't anticipate the approval happening in the next phase outlined by the state, so we don't have an estimate on our opening. We do have a virtual membership program that I hope you're using. You can find it at www.mhcrcmembers.com. And then we have from Todd, a compliment to our chief. I want to commend the chief on the job his officers are doing here in Morgan Hill. You hear so many stories across the nation about how police are so aggressively enforcing the shelter in place, but MHPD has been awesome. Thank you, chief. Yes, I think we have really have the right balance with this. And I think what we've been trying to do is more of an educational approach, which has, I think, worked out well. All right, we have a follow-up question on the indicators. I've been monitoring Santa Clara County's website, indicators of assessment website. It shows that we have satisfied the criteria for reduced number of cases and hospital capacity. So which of the indicators are we not satisfying and why not? I would have to go to the, the county's dashboard where they do track those indicators. And, and so maybe one of my teammates can do that and look to see if we can see which indicators aren't being met. But just from, you know, the, as recent as today, you know, I've, I've heard from the county that we're just, we're just not there yet on as far as the indicators go. And so if we have more information during this call, we can, we can provide that just based on the county information. And if not, you know, we'll just put the link for the county website. Questions? Comments for that matter? So Chris, who asked the question, put up the website for the indicators, thank you. And the county is really good about updating that, those indicators. They're updating the number of cases, they're tracking convalescent facilities as there's, you know, just been a concentrated population of, of individuals getting COVID and passing it along in those facilities. And so they're tracking that amongst other things.
Christina?
Yeah.
This is Michelle. I, Chris did share that link and I'm looking at it and this actually came up on a call we were on the other day. I, in just looking at the website, one of the indicators, indicator three is progress towards the goal for testing. And they're looking at 200 tests per day per 100,000 people. And so we're still under 100 and so that is one of the indicators.
And Michelle, also the tracing, right?
Exactly, that was the next thing is the contract, contact tracing, which they're working on. The county is looking to get employees to do contact tracing right now.
Yeah, the, the county has done a call out for volunteers. They're looking for 600 volunteers to help out. And, and they're looking for volunteers for almost a whole year, maybe it's nine months, to help out with that effort. Okay, so Seema, thank you all for working in this pandemic. Really appreciate your hard work. Thank you, thank you Seema for sharing that. Yvonne, just heard from a business owner downtown how well they thought the police department was handling the situation and rather than coming down with an iron fist, encouraging people to comply for others. Thank you for sharing that, appreciate that. And Chris, I appreciate all the information. It's very great that you are all so responsive. Thank you, Chris. That is our goal to be available, you know, to have these town halls so we can have the dialogue with our community, you know, putting out the information. We do a weekly 411. Some of that is, is devoted to for, to the COVID pandemic, but then there's all sorts of wealth of information in our 411s. And then we also try to push out periodic COVID updates that, you know, hopefully you're on the email list for, for getting updates from the city of Morgan Hill. Sometimes they'll show up as coming from Maureen Tobin. If you're not on that list, let us know and we can share how to get on that list. It looks like we have a question from Liam.
Yeah, one more.
Sure.
Actually, a comment and a suggestion. Excuse me. I, I wanted to reiterate too and say thank you to all of you guys. You know, it's been difficult for all of us. It's great to see you guys hanging in there and especially the police as well. You know, we, things look pretty safe and normal around here and I think we shouldn't take that for granted. So thanks and compliments to everybody. One other suggestion, Christina, I don't know if this come up before or not and it kind of falls into my sort of purview around. I hear, I've talked to a number of businesses too, myself, not that many, but I, I ask around, you know, and say, you know, where can you help? And one of the things I think they're struggling with is especially very small businesses, this whole concept of how they can get help for themselves, you know, with the federal government and assistance and payment programs and so on and payroll payment programs. They really struggle with understanding, not only understanding how to do it, but when you try and do it, the reams of paper and long phone calls that you have to endure to try and get through it. I think obviously it's in all of our interests as a community, as a city, right? Anything we could do with it to help those guys too? And maybe there's some way we could get together, I'm including myself here, to provide some assistance to these guys. This is my point earlier about you as a city, and you were saying, Dawn, sometimes your hands are bound, right? You might get some money, you might get some assistance, but it's very specific to what you do with it. And it might never get to help a business, whereas a lot of times they can help themselves if they knew how to do it, right? Or had some help on it doing it. So maybe something we could think about.
Yeah, no, I appreciate that. And we have, you know, for, for the business community have done a whole lot in the way of helping businesses know about what resources are out there, hosting different webinars, working with the Chamber of Commerce. They've been doing a lot and trying to help businesses, but you're absolutely right. It is a lot of paperwork, it's a lot to navigate through and a lot of determination is required. You know, I know of one company, one small business in town had to apply three, three times to get his PPP and finally it came through. So thank, thank you for that comment. We have some, a comment on Anderson Dam. Anderson Dam is seismically unsound. Is it a good idea to build an elementary school in such a dangerous location? Personally speaking, I would not feel comfortable sending my own children there. Moreover, that the site is on top of the formerly toxic soil is a huge problem. I would never send my children to such a school. Okay, so first thing that I wanted to say is just announced today that our assembly member, Robert Rivas, was behind a bill, it's AB 3005, it passed unanimously. And basically it's all about the, the dam and the dam safety. And so it is a project to help expedite the construction of the dam and get it retrofitted. So that's something he's been pushing hard for, Valley Water has been pushing hard for, as well as us as a city. And so do we have any comments, whether they be from Chris or Dawn about Borello School and location by the dam?
I can let Chris answer the dam and the other questions. I would just say, because the school district is an independent governmental entity, they have what's called intergovernmental immunity, which means we don't regulate them. So whether that's, without expressing an opinion as to the safety of the site, it's not something that we regulate, but Chris may know more than I do about the, the school site.
Maybe just a couple of things to add, Dawn, first on the dam. So on the safety of the dam, the Federal Energy Regulatory Commission is requiring that the water district keep the level of the dam down very, very far now. So we're not going to, we're not going to see significant water in the dam until it's retrofitted. So that is intended to deal with the safety of the dam until the retrofit happens. And that retrofit is going to be many, many years away from completion. So that's kind of one of the key components on safety. I have nothing on the school site and location to add over what Dawn said. I will, will say that the city has long considered a joint park school site on that site. It is in our capital improvement program to partner and put the park on the school site there. And I would just say that we would, you know, just as a school district would have to do, if we choose to partner, we'd have to make sure that we meet all the requirements for safety on that piece, if that does go forward.
Thank you, Chris. And just to clarify on that, AB 3005, it passed through its first assembly committee. So it's not fully done yet. Okay, so I think our next question is related to vets for smaller, large animals. Was told rabies rattlesnake vaccines fall under essential? Since have to visit the vet, why can't they do other vaccines? How to know what vaccine treatments can be done and what can't? I am not, I'm not sure about vets and what's allowed and what's not. My guess is there's some information in the frequently asked questions. One of my teammates could scan through and just see if there's a, a link that gets us to veterinarians and what's allowed. If not, we can just repost the frequently asked questions or the, there's a, there's a link so that you can ask any specific questions to the county. They're pretty good about responding fairly timely. Okay, let's see here. Michelle, I don't see any other questions. Looks like you just posted the frequently asked questions, thank you. Any other questions or comments? So we've posted the frequently asked questions as well as how to ask a question of the county. And as they get questions that haven't been asked before, they, they're good about updating their frequently asked questions. So we refer to it quite a bit as we get questions. So I'll wait just another moment before we conclude.
Christina?
Yeah.
This is Michelle. In reading the FAQs, one of the questions is, can I go to a vet or pet hospital if my pet is sick? And the FAQ answer is, yes, please call first to determine if the vet has any restrictions in place. From what I understand and just talking to other people in the community, some businesses, although they can be open, are not comfortable being open and so some aren't. So it may be a matter of one specific vet doesn't feel comfortable serving clients unless there are emergencies, while others may be following what is allowed.
Yeah, yeah. And the other thing I've heard through individuals going to vets is that the, somebody from the vet will come outside, grab the pet, take the pet inside and then the adult, the human gets to wait outside in the parking lot.
Veterinarian services are considered essential services. I wasn't aware that, that vaccines were not included in that. And I, I suspect that it may just be the preference of a particular veterinarian.
Yeah.
Not to be handling routine matters right now.
Sure. Okay, so we have a, see, I, a question. I apologize if this question was asked and answered previously. I can operate my portrait business on an outdoor socially distanced level. Is it necessary to get certification in order to do that? So first off, the county has told us as, as we've worked with them, you know, on certain businesses, that they don't, they don't provide, you know, certification in, in most cases, you know? So they can provide guidance based on, based on the order. As far as a portrait business, I don't believe that that is allowed yet. Outdoor businesses, there are some outdoor businesses that are allowed and that's specifically addressed in the frequently asked questions. But I'm just not sure about portrait businesses. But I'm just not sure about portrait businesses in particular. Any other, Michelle, you're at the frequently asked questions. Do you see anything that would help out with that question?
No, nothing is coming up. I can put in the link to the contact at the county for businesses that businesses can reach out to, to get advice to see if they can operate.
Okay, great.
And with specific questions like, like that, if you want to contact us offline, we can, we can provide some guidance as well.
Yeah. And then John Curley provided some information. The following was a great resource that assisted our business with applications and processing the PPP and EIDL fund, and that's Ally Lopez. And we've had her on some of our webinars. She's from the Silicon Valley Small Business Development Center. And so her contact has been posted there. Thank you for sharing that. Okay. I don't see any further questions or comments. Michelle, are you seeing any that I'm missing?
No.
Okay. All right, so your next opportunity to engage is tomorrow at our workshop. It's scheduled from nine to three. So it's our budget workshop to talk about our budget and the recommended budget adjustments that are necessary to address the revenue loss that we are experiencing and will experience as COVID is, is here and the shelter in place order is in effect. So join us tomorrow and we will have town halls for the, the remaining Thursdays in May. So thank you so much for joining us and we will talk with you all soon. Take care.